At this time, I'll call the May 9th, 2019 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we have is the approval of the agenda, and we have an addition regarding the purchase of a new vaccine refrigerator for the health department. And then Brad, were we going to go ahead and put that on the adjustment, on the paramedic schedule?
If you'd like to, that'd be great.
I think we'll go ahead and add that as the second item on the agenda, and with those two additions, I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second the agenda.
So we have the motion and the second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of April 25th meeting, the fund expenditures of $309,780.81, abatement's of $5,992.16, added tax, $1,982.84. Wire payments, KDHE is $150,802.12. Capers, $46,470.68. Utilities, $9,921.3.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion or anything to set aside for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner comments. Craig, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Yes, I thought the KCCA conference was one of the better ones I've been to. The gentleman from, Professor from Mooresburn at Ag Law and what County Commissioners do you know, was an excellent, was an excellent firm. Didn't you think so, Brad?
I did.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought all of them were very good, but he was very good.
Yeah, that was, that was probably the best one. And then Roger Hamm from the Appraiser, Deputy Director of the Division of Property Evaluation, was good. I got a call yesterday from a gentleman up in Flora Township. I called him to talk to Martin about the issue. It's on Epic Road. One of our structures up there that was flooded and stuff. I told him, and he was having some issues with Flora Township. I gave him the township trustee's name, and the other two told him the situation. He didn't realize that he was, that townships were responsible for gravelling on roads and stuff like that. But I don't know if Martin talked to you at all. He probably didn't see after I talked to him yesterday.
He didn't see me, huh?
Yeah.
He was, he was a little busy yesterday.
Yeah, well, I called him on the phone and, and I said, you know, you don't have to get up there right now, but you might make sure it's still, you know, the bridge isn't clubbed, because it was a structure, it wasn't a tube or anything or stuff. Well, I did get a couple of other calls, well, I shouldn't say calls, saw in town, and it's on township roads and stuff, that they're having a little problem knowing the situation, that they think they live out in a rural county and rural community and think that the county takes care of all the roads. In formant, it was township, and they didn't tell the township officials. That's all I have, Lynn.
Okay, thank you. Ron?
I enjoyed visiting the different county commissioners at the commission meeting last week, and the speakers, and especially some of the ones on grants to help communities out. I think it's a vital time to spend and share ideas and frustrations that you have, so I appreciate the commission appointing me to go that and learn from the other commissioners too. So, thank you.
Okay. A few things I'll just mention. This morning, we started at eight o'clock for our meeting. It's a public meeting, so anyone can be here, and we're discussing budget, the budget. We're going to be doing that for the next few weeks, and so it is open if anyone wants to be here Thursday at eight o'clock next week and the few weeks that follow. We had the group from the Historical Society come in. We also had Dixon County Economic Development Corp. come in, the Tri-County Fair, and the Conservation District. And so we're hearing what some of their needs are and having the opportunity to ask them questions. I also have a board meeting tonight for the Dixon County Economic Development that I'll be attending, and then next Monday, we have our board meeting for Central Kansas Mental Health. At this time, we'll go ahead and move on. If there's any public comments that anyone would have on something that is not on the agenda item, this would be opportunity to bring that up if you'd want to have any comment at this time. Anytime that takes place, we have you go to the podium and introduce yourselves and so on. We don't have any public comment, but we do have a couple of guests, and we're, since this is your first time here, you maybe don't know the drill, but I'm glad you're both paying attention. I guess you're here on part of a school project, and what we like to have you do is, is if each of you individually would introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit why you're here and the purpose, and so we'll do that at this time. And you can do it from where you're at, if you'd please stand and say loud enough so it picks up for our live stream and so on.
My name is Logan Brown, and I'm here for my virtual school project. I have to do four meetings, or four community meetings, and this is my third one.
Okay, what are the other two that you've been at?
I went to the Lions Club meeting and the Optimus Club meeting yesterday.
Okay. And then from, do you have a copy of the agenda that we're discussing today?
No, I don't have one.
Okay. We can probably, yes, we might go ahead and get you a copy so you both have that. And then...
I'm Tiffany Kaker. I'm also here for online school, but I'm doing it because we had to do a big service project, and we're required to have four community meetings. That way, we actually impact the community when we do our service projects, and this is my second one.
Have to be here? I'd like to be here. I mean, that's...
I mean, it's always fun to go to the meetings, because you get to understand what's really going on, so I actually like them.
So, when you get done here today, you can give us a report, or we sign your deal, and you give us a report back on what you found out today.
Would you pass that through? Here's one for each of you.
Thank you, ma'am.
No? Oh. Did you each get one?
Yep.
That was my copy, sorry.
Okay. And sometimes, we all put you on the spot, even though we've been known to do that before.
Yeah. Ron, you rascal, you.
Yeah, everybody's scattered this morning.
But, you know, sometimes, it is interesting, the perception people have of the different forms of government and, and what it involves and so on, and you'll hear questions from the public, well, where do our taxes go? And, you know, not only are we making budget decisions today, and some of the things we'll be considering, but, you know, the jail is located here, we have, this is where you pay your taxes, this is where you, have you registered to vote, for example? And maybe either of you are 18 yet, I don't know.
Yeah.
But this is, this is the place you do register to vote. Your driver's license, you can obtain that here, and so there's a lot of county services, road and bridge, so we hope today's meeting is helpful for you and good luck with your school career.
Thank you.
Are you both ready to graduate after this year, or do you...
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, so we're glad you're here. The next item we have, and Brad, you might go ahead and be calling up the person for the public hearing, but before we do that, we're going to go ahead and have that, we have one proclamation today?
Yes.
And Julie, would you want to maybe step to the podium? I guess this is a proclamation that you brought to us.
Do you want to explain to you a little bit about it?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Well, I think many of you know, I previously worked in Wamigo, and Wamigo was part of the Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area. So, over 10 years ago, Kansas started work to become a national heritage area. So, this isn't a national park, but it really is designating that area as an important place in history. And national heritage areas are really difficult to obtain, and they said, Kansas on its own? Nope, it's not going to work. So, they joined forces with Missouri to create Freedoms Frontier's National Heritage Area to tell the story of Bleeding Kansas. A few weeks ago, Jim Ogle, who used to formerly be with WIBW, he's now the director of Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area, and he reached out to see if Dickinson County would want to be a part of it. And I said, well, this would be awesome promotion to be tied to Eastern Kansas, Western Missouri, but how do we fit in this story? And he said, we are looking at Freedoms Frontier as a much broader story. It's not just Bleeding Kansas. It's Eisenhower and being, you know, commander and World War II, and the 75th anniversary of D-Day, and freeing the world from Nazi Germany. It is the creation of the railroad system, which helped to really open up transportation systems. It's Chisholm Trail story and the freedom that the cowboys faced out on the trail. It is Abilene, or, excuse me, Chapman's Joe Ingalls astronaut freedom and need to explore space. So, we have a lot of really cool stories to share that relate back to freedom. So, between Harrington Hope, Chapman, all of our communities, the museums, I really think we could benefit from this. So, they have to go through a reauthorization process, and so before they do that, they said, let's look at including a few more counties into this story. And so they're asking for some support to see if Dickinson County would like to join forces with them. It does not cost us anything, but if approved by Congress, and our senators Jerry Moran and Pat Roberts are working on this, it could open up the doors for about $150,000 to $750,000 a year for the area. Not bad to talk about brochures, signage, and just increased partnerships, opportunities for all of our historic sites to really help tell our story. So, that is why I'm here, asking for just a resolution of support to pursue that process for Dickinson County to join the Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and read this, and then we'll take the next step here. This is a proclamation in support of Dixon County joining Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area, Inc. Whereas Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area tells the stories of the settlement of the frontier, the border, the Civil War on the western frontier, and the enduring struggle for freedom. And whereas Congress established Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area in 2006 to make the nationally significant stories of this region better now to its citizens and the nation as a whole. And whereas Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area is one of 55 national heritage areas designed to create a unique public-private partnership to support the telling of the nationally significant stories. And whereas Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area covers 41 counties, 3 million people, and nearly 30,000 square miles of land that share this story. And whereas more than 265 museums, historic sites, and economic development organizations exist within the Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area. And whereas Dixon County shares in these stories, but was not included in the original boundary of the Freedoms Frontier's National Heritage Area. And whereas Dixon County and many of its historic sites, museums, and organizations would benefit through a partnership with Freedoms Frontier National Heritage. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Dixon County Commission hereby urges the United States Congress to reauthorize Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area through House Resolution 1049 to provide it with robust funding for its partner programs and include Dixon County in the boundary of the heritage area. Signed this day, the ninth day of May, 2019. Is there a motion to adopt that proclamation?
I'll make a motion to accept the proclamation.
There's a motion and the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If you'll come up here, we'll present a copy of the proclamation to you, Julie.
Oh, thank you.
You want to pass them? Stuff needs to be signed, if you want.
I will.
Thank you.
This is a great way for us to celebrate National Travel and Tourism Week, so we would invite everybody to come to the Greyhound Hall of Fame this evening from 5:00 to 7:00 for drinks and food to celebrate Abilene and Dickinson County's robust tourism industry.
And how long have you been with the CVV?
It'll be three years in November.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So, appreciate all the work you've done.
Oh, thank you. It's a good place.
Do you want to sign this, Ron?
I'll just do it, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Since you're down there by Craig, sometimes we get a picture of this, so we'll get a picture of Craig and...
We'll just get Ron her. Well, it's Ron's daughter. I'll let you present it to Ron.
All right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
You can photocopy me out of that.
My shoulders are going to give her a little rub, Ron.
Yeah. Oh, I gotta be eight.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, Julie.
I gave you every opportunity, there, Ron.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and get him on the line.
We have a public hearing coming up on the agenda, but there's also a property owner that lives in another state, so participate, so...
I can't get down there. You can't either, Ron.
Well, hell, I don't know where that is.
Yeah, you might get down, you may get back up, is what you're saying?
I know, I probably...
Yeah, it's got a filter on there.
They'll go back and further does it there.
All right, just move this folder. I think we keep it in the folder.
Okay.
Are you going to give me the proclamation? Thank you.
This will be Ken.
This is Ken Manley.
Hello, Ken, this is Brad, and I've got you on live here in the commission meeting, so they're getting ready to start their public hearing.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and you can hear us okay? Ken, you can hear us okay, I guess? Ken?
Say it again, please.
Can you hear us okay?
Uh, yeah, yeah, pretty well.
Okay. At this time, the next item on the agenda is to have a public hearing to vacate the 1300 of 2900 Avenue West, a fair road in Willowdale Township. And so at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Kind of a preliminary part of this, and there will be opportunity for comments if anyone does want to make comments or has a question. Brad, would you go ahead and kind of give us a summary report of this vacating?
Yes, this comes about from Willowdale Township as a petition to you. There's a short section of, and I'll point at the map as I go, of 2900 Avenue right here that is from Fair Road West for a portion until it hits the road again. Originally, when the roads were platted, this was the way the road would have gone. However, because you see two crick crossings here, at some point in time, the county chose to purchase the right-of-way around here and only put one bridge in, and this has sat as idle right-of-way for all the years. There are power utility pulls through the right-of-way, but there's, but there's no logical or future need for that as far as the county sees and the, or the township sees, and so they've requested that we, we vacate that right-of-way. If it is vacated, that property would go back to the landowners on either adjacent side. In this case, I think it's the same landowner on either side, which is Mr. Manley, who's on the phone. The easement through there for the utility company would remain in place, so...
Okay, thank you, Brad. We do have this up on the screen where we can take a look at it. There's also some other people that have gathered here. I don't know if, if you have specific questions, or you just want to, just kind of be in the know of what's being discussed, but, but if you do have any questions or comments, I'd go ahead and allow those at this time.
No, I think we're okay with it. We're just, we sold the ground to Manley, so it pretty much concerns them, not us anymore.
Okay. Now, Brad, on this, just kind of for clarity, when we vacate this, is published, but also property owners are notified?
Yes.
What's the manner of getting the word out?
Bart published it in a newspaper, and then we gathered the names of all the landowners and people who resided within, I think, two miles or three miles, I'm not sure what we used this one, and sent out mailed notifications to them as well.
Okay. Now, I have not received any objections or concerns regards to this personally. I don't know, Ron or Craig, as commissioners, have you received any comments that...
I, I've not received any, not at all.
I talked over Talmadge, I was over there last, one day last week, and, and brought it up, and should have been done probably a long time ago.
Okay.
Mr. Manley, have you found a landowner?
Ken, you're on the line. Do you have any comments you'd want to make before we close the public hearing? What we do on the public hearing is we receive the comments, but then it's after the public hearing we take action.
Well, yes, I would just comment that I found Brad's assessment of the situation quite accurate. The road has been through, and clearly it was so they, they sent it to the South so they could do one bridge instead of two. The current right-of-way is of no use to the county that we can see, and I certainly do appreciate the consideration of the vacation of that right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Doug, procedurally, everything we followed, the steps we need?
Seems to be fine.
Okay. Kind of one last chance for any public comments or questions. Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. The public hearing's now closed. I think since we have Mr. Manley on the line, before we receive our reports and so on, I think we could go ahead and move down to this particular item on the resolution to vacate 1300 Avenue of 2900 Avenue West, a fair road in Willowdale Township. The resolution number on this is 050919, and I'd entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
So, move?
I second.
We have the motion and the second to adopt resolution 050919. This is to vacate the 1300 feet of public right-of-way located in 2900 Avenue West, a fair road in Willowdale Township, Dixon County, Kansas. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that takes care of this particular item. Unless you want to stay on the line for the rest of the meeting, Mr. Manley, we'll go ahead and hang up.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to participate, and I appreciate the policy of vote. Thank you to the commission.
Goodbye, Ken. Bye.
So, there's a place for us to sign here, so... Okay, so we have that item taken care of. What we'll go back to now is the reports of county officers, so Brad, we have you here first.
Okay, in your packet, you have both the year-to-date staff report and the year-to-date budget reports, and I won't go into a lot of detail on that there with your, but we've got a couple terminations in employment, and we're trying to, as you heard earlier in the work session, trying to fill those as we go along, so... Sales tax in the, in the budget report is down a little bit, not inconsistent with normal, and this is, I think, the February, February revenue coming in, so unless you have any questions on that, but it's pretty self-explanatory. The road bridge personnel Monday start their summer hours, so they're working Monday through Thursday, with the exception of this week, I'm sure, with all the flooding and high water. They're working four 10-hour days, so if anything happens and you need something on Friday, you might have to go through our office to get ahold of somebody, because they typically will be off unless there's something going on. Many times, the mechanics will work on Fridays, try to catch up, because with only two of them, sometimes they're behind, but for the most part, and for Ron's benefit, that, we started that a number of years ago. When you're taking heavy equipment out to the job site, and you get it all set up, and you get started, it's about half a day, and, and these longer days, we can get more done on a 10-hour day. It saves a day's worth of deployment of equipment, and resources, and fuel, and everything, so we get a lot more done working the four 10-hour days. The appraiser's office in the next week or two will start the same thing. They'll be working longer days, four 10-hour days as well, so... The Tyler Project, as we've referred to for the last 18 months, and I'm sure you've heard us talk about it and probably tired of it, but it, we did what's called a cut over Monday on the 911 system. Everything went very well. As of today, they've gotten the bulk of the system, which includes the 911 CAD, the records management for the jail, sheriff's department, police department, as well as all the facets and connections in between, and also the mobile computers in the sheriff's cars, they've started that. It's going very well this week, and again, I want to commend our GIS and IT staff. If it wasn't for them, it wouldn't have gone that way. But I was down yesterday in dispatch and kind of looked, and for the first time in history in Dickinson County, we got a couple sheriff's cars out. You could actually see them moving around on the map, where they're at, the system, when it's all up and running, will, and finally, final tweaks are done, they will be able to run tags and driver's licenses in their car, they can access their cases, see the cases that are going on. It's just some really good technology that will enhance operations and enhance officer safety, and it replaces a 20-year-old system that we put in place back in 2000 that has served us very well all these years. But like everything, technology changes for the better, and, but it's a big project, and it's been going on, like I say, for 18 months. It's been in the works and in the programming, and so I'm sure Sherry and, and her staff would be glad to get it up and running, to be able to breathe for a change, so, but it's off and running, and over the next, next month or two, we'll continue to get hardware installed in the sheriff's vehicles and in the ambulances. We'll have a, a iPad in the 20 ambulances that's connected to the system as well, so pretty neat technology, and it's, it's working well. House Bill 2140, if you paid any attention to the media, the legislature closed decision about midnight Saturday night, the very last bill, I believe, that was voted on, was House Bill 2140, which included our sales tax provision to extend it for 10 years if it's approved by the voters in November. So, that and the other four counties in Kansas that were asking for similar approval was all included in that. So, Representative Barker called me Monday morning to let me know that. I'd already, I'd been watching on, on social media, and Jay Hall, the case, he's done a good job of keeping me informed, keeping all of us informed, but we did get it passed, so we'll be able to work on that question on the ballot, and, and if the voters are gracious enough to approve that again, it'll be for 10 years around in five, so... Now, in the same breath, I think I emailed you, actually, Sunday night or Monday night, we got a call, and there was a large hole that developed. Actually, I can probably show you the hole here, it's kind of interesting.
Oh, speaking to Jay Hall, I thought he did an excellent job. I've always thought Melissa did a nice job, but I thought he was better.
I thought he did too, very informative, so...
Yeah, I should have spoke about him, but I thought he did an excellent job.
Let's see if I can find this here. I think I put it over in this one.
Did they get the plate in yet?
They were trying to do it today, they were hoping it, it would come today. This is a hole that developed Sunday night, Monday, in the deck of the bridge up at 2790 Fair Road. It's the big concrete bridge just south of Talmadge. The hole goes clear through, as you can see. When they got up and started doing some checking, the concrete on that bridge is rotten. I don't know how else to put it. You can flick it around with a screwdriver, pliers, and it just falls apart, which is typically what happens to concrete after many years of salt and deterioration. What they're, what we're going to do temporarily is we found, had to purchase a steel plate, we're going to put over that hole, bolt it down, and then they'll feather the edges out with some, some pavement, so it's not a rough bump, and then we will keep our fingers crossed that no others develop in that deck. If another one develops on the other side, and it continues, we'll probably have to close that road. It's been closed the last three days now because of that. But what that means is that one gets accelerated to the top of the list on our bridge replacement schedule, because that's about a 200-foot bridge, and it's not going to be cheap. So, therefore, we need that sales tax even more so to, to deal with those things, but I'm guessing that's probably going to be a $500,000, $600,000 debt replacement. The good news, if there is any, is the, the steel underneath and the piers are in good shape, so we hopefully can do the same thing we did at Eaton Road and Old Forty and replace the deck. But... the deck, but we're looking at pretty good, pretty good expense, so...
That was one of the one, three bridges that we were gonna replace, have them x-rayed instead?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we knew it was, I mean, it's not a surprise to us, we just didn't realize it'd come about quite that fast, so... But yeah, we were gonna have it, have it x-rayed for like a...
Yeah, it's not that far.
See what its condition was, so now we kind of know, so... But any rate, that happened, and we're dealing with it. So if you get any calls or comments about the bridges south of Townage, you know what it is, so... The last thing that I've got is in your packets, I've cleaned it out, provided you a copy of the census complete count booklet, and obviously that's coming up, and we're gonna need to create some committees to deal with that. But I thought it was really good information, as I read it yesterday, so I give it to you to kind of look through the next week or two as we discuss that in the future. And there's a few things in the timeline that need to be triggered to be done for the census. One of those is we have to submit some digital data to them. Sherry does that every year, and she'll have that handled here in the next couple of weeks through our GIS data. And then we'll need to come up with some committee people and some people who lead the program through our county and try to get a complete count, if you will, so that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Doug?
I've got a resolution for Redline out of Woodbine, and that's also doing business at KDK. And they're right at the edge of town, and they want to apply for, I think they have applied with, Bruce Wright, have applied an application for tax abatement pursuant to a resolution that was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, the resolution number zero-nine-fourteen-ninety-eight. So I've prepared the documents necessary to do the publication, and I'll give those to Barb afterwards, and we suggest that the board may want to put this on for hearing on May the twenty-third at the regularly scheduled meeting at eleven fifteen, as opposed to eleven. So it will be a public hearing at eleven fifteen if the board chose to do that. And we redo the publication and get that notice out. It has to be not less than seven or more than fifteen days, so we're right on time.
Okay. Like, that sounds doable, and Barb will have the information and Brad, so you can forge ahead with that.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. The next two items we've already covered, we did adopt the proclamations for the Freedom Frontier National Heritage, or does it need to have a resolution attached to it?
No, no.
That takes care of it?
Resolution.
And then we did, we've already done that of the vacating of Thirteen-Hundred Twenty-Nine-Hundred Avenue West of Fair Road. So the two items we have were additions to the agenda, and Brad, why don't you go ahead and just cover that? It's kind of self-explanatory, but the...
I'm not trying to, notice communications, do we have anything?
Yes, we do, thank you.
You're welcome. I didn't have it checked off here.
That's right, that's right.
Don't make over...
For your students, you know, Craig is kind of a longtime commissioner and former, and he's kind of our parliamentarian, so since I strayed from the agenda, I will bring this up real quickly.
You're embarrassing me.
They get paid the same, so... Okay. Are you here as support of one of these two, or are you here for...
Uh, yeah, I'm here for my employees.
Pardon?
I'm here for my employees.
Okay. And this is for a class, then, you're...
Uh, yeah, for community service.
Okay, okay.
Might have come back, we're about over.
We started, yeah, at eleven. Okay. I'll go ahead and go with just those communications. We have a letter we have from the county news. All of us on the commission also received a information on pipeline safety materials, and I think that's probably all that we have that's, as far as anything new. I think Craig earlier had given me something from a person inquiring as far as the process after a sheriff's cell and so on, and so we're gonna get that, we have that information to Brad, and then I think he'll discuss it with our attorney if any replies necessary for that. I didn't have anything else. Did anyone else?
I did notice in the county news, Nico, that a conference is coming up in Clark County in Las Vegas, if any of you want to go to the national conference. Looked like you had some really good information, but...
No, thank you.
I think it's in July, so...
I'll pass.
Mention it.
Okay, well, that's...
Get your gambling on, man.
Oh, mark the calendars, that's... So going back to the addition to the agenda on the health department, Brad, do you want to cover that?
Yes, in the health department, we have, we, as I'm sure you're aware, we store a number of vaccines up there for obvious reasons. And the refrigerator unit that we have there failed on us a few weeks ago. We did have it repaired, which took some refrigerant, but obviously that tells us we do have a leak somewhere, so it's gonna fail again. It is about ten to eleven years old, and so we feel like it probably needs replaced. These are a special medical refrigerator that has very critical tolerances on temperature. They also have sensors built into them, so it hooks up to our alarm system, so if it does get outside of that very close tolerance, it notifies the nine-one-one center immediately so they call somebody. We've got well over ten thousand dollars worth of vaccines in there at any given time. And so, at any rate, we did get bids on the two vendors for a replacement unit. You've got the bids there in front of you. One is a Norlake brand, and the other one is a Panasonic. The Panasonic is just a couple hundred dollars higher than the Norlake, however, based on the fact it's another foot and a half in, or a foot larger by cubic feet inside, it also uses the newer refrigerator. We would recommend that we purchase the Panasonic unit at an amount of five thousand four hundred, five thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars. And also, half of that can be, will be paid for by KDHE, our vaccination program. We, you know, it's really up to the state to provide vaccines, and the health departments, we contract with them, and that's where all those grants come in. So as a part of that, they're willing to pay for half of that expense, so our pocket would only be half of that, but we have to pay the fifty-seven forty-three upfront, so we do have that in the health department budget too, I think, so...
Okay. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to purchase a Panasonic refrigerator for the fifty-seven forty-three.
And a second?
Second.
There's the motion and the second, that we go ahead and take the Panasonic, the five thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item we had in our work-study session, we had discussed some of the adjustments as far as competitive wage rates. Brad, do you want to go ahead and cover that? We've added that to the agenda.
Yes, we provided you some information. We have an opening in the EMS for a paramedic, and it's been open for several weeks now. We're having difficulty getting applicants. We talked to you about that before, one of the issues is we're behind some of the other agencies that we compete with in the area, and so currently the salary, beginning salary for paramedics is thirteen dollars and seventeen cents, I believe, an hour. We would propose and recommend to move that up to fourteen dollars and, fourteen even, I don't have my paper with me. What do we put on that? Fourteen dollars even, begin Jim one. And then we'll also work on that throughout the year for the budget, in the total budget for 2020. But we feel like by raising it up that amount, that it will keep us a little more competitive, it'll retain the people we have, and hopefully it'll spark some more applicants, so... If you recall, we did do the EMTs a year ago, I think it was, or so, because we ended disparaging the salary as well, and so... And at that time, we were kind of competitive with paramedics, but because of the shortage in those, just like in the nursing field, people would have to increase that to demand more applicants, so...
We had our HR director in here, Diane Grino, and so, and like Brad mentioned, this is something we've kind of been working on or having discussions on for some time, and it's within our budget authority, Brad, and we actually have the funds to cover this particular from now, June first, to year end, so...
We do, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Is there a motion to make that adjustment?
I'll make a motion to adjust the wages for the emergency people.
Okay. Now specifically as paramedics, is there a second? Second? Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business to be discussed? Our other business, we had the Redline development, and that's something that Doug has already covered.
Do we need to make that motion to have the May twenty-third, twenty-third of May?
May twenty-third.
Yeah.
Probably should.
Eleven fifteen.
Yeah. Also move that.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second, that's on May twenty-third at eleven fifteen, we will have that hearing, and that gives plenty of time for Barb to make the official notification published. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.